Special CCEC meeting to order on Thursday, October 1st, 2020. I am going to order the, our facilitators will mute you all, unmute you all, and we will call Row.
Okay.
You should all have the ability to unmute yourselves.
Oh, okay. And Karen, can you call Row?
Let me make sure the recording is going. There we go. Alder Carter?
Present.
Alder Abbas?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney? I don't have Alder Harrington McKinney. Oh, what is happening? Okay. Alder Skidmore?
Here.
Okay. Alder Henneck is excused. Alder Tierney?
Here.
Alder Kemble?
Here.
Alder Bedar?
Present.
We have quorum.
Okay, thank you. And will the facilitator please read the meeting instructions?
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please, please activate your video when you're speaking. The chair, clerk, and tech facilitator are responsible for, not responsible for muting and unmuting. You have that capability on your own for CCEC. Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call vote, please unmute yourself. Staff, please use the raise hand feature when you are asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. President Carter, the floor is back to you.
Thank you. And do we have any disclosures or recusals? Okay. And we'll go to number three. Do we have anyone registered for public comment?
Yes, we do.
I just got a message that Alder Harrington McKinney is present.
Yep, nice to hear.
I believe, Stefan, do we have two registrants?
Yes, we have two registrants, both for item three. So did you want to give them the floor now or when we get to item three?
Item three is public comment.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, so they can go now.
Okay, all right. So it looks like Shia, Aaron Lloyd Fisher. You should have a prompt to unmute yourself. There you go.
Shia, go ahead.
Okay.
Hi, and Shia is fine.
Oh, sorry, Shia.
I don't have the ability to activate my camera, which is also fine. But you can hear me okay.
We sure can.
Great. Well, I, so I submitted a letter, and I'm just gonna read the letter, and I'll read it quick so that if there are any questions, people can ask me. My name's Shia Fisher, and here we go. So, dear Executive Council members, I'm interested in holding a seat on the City of Madison Police Civilian Oversight Board. Currently, I serve on Dane County Equal Opportunities Commission. I'm also a student senator at Madison College. Recently, I was appointed to chair the brand-new Ad Hoc Committee Addressing Racial Inequity at Madison College. In the last two semesters, I've earned a 4.0 GPA at Madison College and will graduate this semester with an associate's in science. Next, I plan to continue studies in the spring at UW-Madison studying research methodology applied to computer science, data, and statistics. My first engagement in formal discussions was during my employment at MMSD as a tutor coordinator in the Title VI Native American-Alaskan Indian Tutor Program. So in this role, I was able to present in front of parent committees our findings on academic performance district-wide regarding both middle and high schoolers. I found that by listening to topics beyond the classroom that dealt with racial disparities, folks around the table were deeply moved by the data and mitigating strategies. Since that experience, I was also a volunteer in a Rotary Club in Madison where I became president-elect. With a focus toward the university now, I instead spent several months as a producer for a weekly radio program at WSUM 91.7 FM Madison with a program on Wisconsin. I collaborated with student journalists and learned through this leadership role that leading is often more about listening than anything else. Leading is about discovering hidden talents and sharing responsibility, too. I feel I can demonstrate a healthy amount of experience as a leader and a learner throughout my recent history. As a lifelong Madisonian who has tested many boundaries during my youth, I can certainly speak to what it feels like to be unheard or unaccounted for. I hope I can use my voice to help others searching to find their voice. I hope I can be a part of the board that seeks accountability. I believe in carefully identifying problems and discussing solutions. I believe in finding the most efficient route in applying a plan, especially one as robust as this. If there's one thing I've learned from my experience at the Dane County Sheriff's Citizens Academy, I learned that law enforcement is made up of real people. I view this board, the one that you'll be discussing tonight, as one that is looking at the real people who are also impacted by law enforcement. The more we can humanize each other, the better I think we can apply the 177 recommendations from the MPD Ad Hoc Committee report to build our community into an even better place to live. Thank you so much, and if there are any questions with the amount of time that I have left, I would love to answer them. I've spoken to a few Alders, a few of them on this executive committee as well, and I'm just so happy to be here tonight and share a little bit of background about who I am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Shia? Thank you. And who's the next registrant?
Next registrant is Carl Schrodel.
Yes, and he is here to answer questions about the rank choice voting process. If anyone has any of those type of questions, I believe he'll be there for the meeting to field any of those specific questions about that.
Okay, so if we have questions about that, he's available to speak.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
That's correct. Hi.
Hello, Carl. We'll have you on standby.
Thanks.
Okay. So we'll now move on to item four. And are we gonna have Attorney Haas start out with the overview of what we're gonna do tonight?
I would be happy to, Madam President. I was just looking back at the resolution laying out this process. And when it gets to this stage, the resolution simply says that the names of the 13 regular and alternate board members shall be provided to the Common Council Executive Committee for its consideration at its meeting. And so you do have your list of the 11 that were appointed through the previous processes. And I think Karen has the results of the vote from the council. So you will have a slate of 13 nominees, I believe, or 13 regular and 13 regular and alternate board members. I think that the most straightforward way to proceed would be to have a motion on that whole slate. The complication would come in if anybody on this body does not agree with all of those names. The resolution is really unclear as to what would happen in that case. The resolution contemplates that after this committee meets, the council meets to confirm the nominees. And as I've said before, I don't think we can dictate to either this committee or individual Alders that they have to vote one way or the other. I think the resolution sort of anticipates that the slate would be approved. But if there is any objection to individual names, we may have to cross that bridge when we come to it. It may depend upon if the name came from an organization, or it was a mayoral appointee, or it came out of the election by the council members. Ultimately, I think the, you know, the council is in charge of this process, and it's going to be majority rules. But if we don't have to get into the complicating factors, maybe we can set that aside and see how far we get with the initial slate.
Okay, so to have a motion to accept this slate, and then a second, presumably, then we would discuss this slate, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that is part of it. So does anyone have any questions before I ask for a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion on the COB slate? Okay, I have no motion for that. So what is the next step?
Well, I, you know, there needs to be some action, I guess. If there's not support for that type of motion, there can be a motion to accept some part of the list or none of the list and pass that on to the council.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept some of the joint appointment, appointment designated set of nominating organizations? To accept part? I don't have a motion for that either, Attorney Haas.
It looks like Alder Bedar is the end.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Shiva. Here you are. See you now.
Thank you, President Carter. I will make a motion to, for the entire slate. That's before us for purposes of discussion.
Do I have a second? Alder Abbas?
Thank you.
It's been moved in second. And we are open for discussion. Do you want me to go back to you, Alder Bedar, because your hand is up? No? Okay, that's okay. Does anyone want to discuss this slate? I know there were some questions regarding terms, so we can probably do that at this time. Alder Kemble?
Okay, yeah, I raised in email the question of terms because
Yep.
information that Karen sent us on the ranked choice voting indicated that Anthony Cooper would have a two-year term. In the ordinance, it spells out that the first set of alternates will have two-year terms, but it doesn't say how the two-, three-, and four-year terms will be assigned to appointees. And, you know, that was, that was, and I would say, an oversight in our writing of the ordinance that we didn't say how that ought to be done. But I think from my point of view, I assumed that it would be done randomly. After we had selected the whole slate, we would, you know, do, we would list the 11 regular nominees and do like a random sequence of numbers. You go at random.org or, you know, whatever. There's a way to do random sequence of numbers and then randomly assign them. So the most, I'm not finished with my thoughts. That seemed to me the most fair and transparent way to do it. But Karen said that the mayor and council leadership had already decided on those terms, and I would like us to revisit that and discuss this as a question.
Okay, so what is the question? How we came about that? Is that the question?
Well, yeah, if you'd like to speak to it, but I think, but I'm also proposing an alternative that we assign the terms randomly instead of choosing who gets what term.
So let me just, you brought up two different things. So in the ordinance, the alternates, both council appointments and mayor appointments, would get two years. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying? Okay. So really, what we're gonna be discussing tonight, I mean, with your, with your, what you're raising, is the nine would be set randomly or all of them?
The 11.
Okay. Okay, Alder Abbas?
Thank you very much. Alder Kemble, thank you very much. I appreciate the thought. And we, when leadership sit together with the mayor office, we went through the ordinance and we look into all the directions, guideline, and the clarity which we had through the ordinance was to pick those number, names, and also after then, read their application and see how we can allocate some, what type of terms. So one of the members through that list is a student. One is retired, one is UW. And so we look into that and see how many years we can, it as looking at their application rather than doing random sampling. Coming to your point, we try our best not to be biased. We try our best to do on merit as a leadership and as a mayor, mayor and the leadership together to look at their experience, their situation, and allocate those years. And I thought that process the way we did. I'm happy to hear more thoughts on it, and I thought the process we did was pretty fair. And I was happy with that, the way it was.
Thank you, Alder Abbas. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm on my phone because I'm not able to pull it up full screen, but I am present. I'm not really, I'm still not clear about, I appreciate the fact that Vice President said that there was great thought in the process to make it fair and not random. But could you go through that process again for me? Because I, that part was not in my head. Could you restate how that, how that process of selecting the number of years was applied?
Sure. So during that part, I think there were several names being discussed, Alder McKinney. Some names I had different opinion, and the mayor office have a different opinion, and the president of the council can also have her own opinion. But the names where we have consensus, and the names we thought are, after reading their application and also seeing there is a, all of us is on the same page, we decided to move forward after reading their application. We want to put them in a certain year of experience bracket, and also looking at their application, what they bring to the table. That's what the criteria we use, looking at their experience bracket and how we can be used in a meaningful way. As I said before, if there is a student there or other committee members, we also look how best they can be accommodated. So we choose numbers according to looking at their experience, really thoroughly study their professional experience, their resume, and that was the criteria. Now, I don't have those application in front of me, but you get my point, right?
Right, right, right. I just, I needed to hear what that process was to arrive at, at how many years each?
Here's my, yes, and here's my thing. If, I will ask, I will refer this to city attorney to clarify rather than I clarify that because we follow the ordinance as it is. If there is something we miss in the ordinance, which, then I will ask the city attorney to present and let us know if that criteria, if there is any certain criteria was set through the ordinance about how many years who should be allocated, then please, no. I will refer this to city attorney.
And just before, yes, go ahead, and I do have something to say about our selection. Go ahead, Attorney Haas.
Well, as Alder Kemble said, I think this was maybe an oversight as far as assigning the terms. And so there is not anything specific, and so we're left with trying to decide. I mean, I think just kind of brainstorming, the options are to leave it as is, and the last appointee gets a two-year term, or do it randomly as Alder Kemble suggests, or maybe look at, you have three categories of terms. You have kind of three categories of appointees, and is there an equitable way to distribute the regular member appointments so that, you know, the mayor and the organizations and the council kind of pools are all treated fairly?
Okay. I am satisfied that there was a system in the discussion and the arrival of what those, I'm not supporting randomization, but what I hear you said, that the process was to look at each application and then make those assessments based upon the applications, the experience of the names before you. Is that what I heard?
That is what you heard.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Right.
I'm not supporting a ran, I would not be supporting a random selection process.
And Alder Bedar, I didn't see your hand up when I interrupted, trying to get in before Attorney Haas. So please go ahead.
Thank you, President Carter. I guess I just wanted to chime in to say that, first, I appreciate that you had a process by which you decided to assign it. I think that what it creates, though, and again, unintended consequence, completely get that, but what it creates is an inability for us for the two, for the one appointment, right? We know that the alternates are two-year. That was in the ordinance. But for the one council appointment, we are left now with a two-year appointment because that's the only appointment that is left. We have no choice than doing anything else. So by not having been able to, and that could have been in your process, you know, if you had used the same process and that person was in your pool, you may have decided using the process you were using that that person was a four-year appointment, right? But you didn't know.
Right.
At that time, who that person was going to be. So I think that part of the issue is now we find ourselves with one appointment by the council that ends up by what's left being a
By default.
Yeah, by default. And then, and again, I just, you know, again, looking at potentially the top appointment, the slate we have before us, I would think that we could argue that that person probably, in your use of your process, would have ended up as a four-year person or a three-year person. So that's, I think that it's fair to raise like, what, do we want to go back and apply across and change somebody? So there's two things we could do. Go back and apply your process across not the entire slate of 11, and maybe change somebody's, you know, some of the years. Or, again, we can do a randomized process as suggested by Alder Kemble. But I do think that just ending up with the last appointment, just getting two years because there is not, no other option, probably is not a good, there's no process then.
Well, personally, I think that, thank you, Alder Bedar, for that insight. I think that this body can change that. I don't think it has to go through software that picks randomly. That doesn't necessarily mean that the council appointment would get, excuse me. Attorney Haas, is your hand up?
It is. I can't figure out how to do it on Zoom anymore.
Oh, okay. That's okay. I was just trying to figure out what you were up to over there, but anyway.
I just wanted to mention, of course, you know, maybe an obvious point, but there would be the opportunity to reappoint people after the end of their term, whoever gets the two-year terms.
Thank you. Well, I, personally, I think we can change a term tonight to make the council appointment four years. I don't think that is out of our purview, our umbrella, so to speak. We can do that tonight. Are there any, and I will keep that on the table. I just want to know if there's any other, I'll say, concerns with the slate before we look at terms. Okay.
Alder McKinney has her hand up.
Alder McKinney, go ahead, and then I'm gonna, go ahead, Alder McKinney.
Okay, Madam Chair. My input is this, is that, and you said that we have the flexibility of changing that rotation or that ranking on the number of years. But you, you had a process that you followed, and it was not outlined in the ordinance exactly. Those details was not outlined in the ordinance as to how those appointments would be made. And from what I heard is that there was consideration and putting in a process that was in place. Now, because we are not set, because the ranking, the number of years did not come out in a certain way. I mean, so my question is, is that if you use the process and you're going to follow the process, then I'm not really sure that I'm understanding why you, we are going to toss that out and do something, something
Well, I'm not looking at tossing out the process. I, I'm not looking at tossing out the process, but if we want the council appointment to have four years and someone else is gonna not have four years, that's just the way it is. Now, we can do that or we can leave it as is and go on to some of the other issues with this, with the slate. Alder Bedar, please. You're muted.
My apologies for chiming in again, but again, that, without questioning the process, I'm just, I'm gonna say again that that process is not being able to be applied to the last appointment because they weren't part of the process, because we didn't know about them until today. So I do think that if we are going to say we had a process by which we decided all the years, then we need to apply it across 11. And we may, I mean, so one and or change the process. Those are the two things before us.
Okay, thank you. Alder Kimball.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this was, you know, this issue was raised in my mind when we got the email from Karen just recently this afternoon. And in going over the meeting materials and I'm, you know, I, I can be okay with leaving it as it is. But, you know, this is one of the, of the several things that, as we've gone through this process that we're gonna need to clarify for the future. The Alder work group, when we, when we drafted this ordinance to begin with, understood that there would need to be tweaking of, you know, not just the ordinance, but the actual processes around it. And so I want to really thank council leadership, the mayor, the mayor's staff, and especially Karen for all of the scrambling and work you've done in the last several weeks to get to where we are today. It's been a huge challenge, I know, and, and it's really quite amazing that we're here. It's not perfect in every way and, but we're, you know, this whole area is new to us as a city. We're experimenting and this is, you know, it's, it's a historical thing we're doing. And I just, I really appreciate everyone's efforts and all the thought that everyone has, has put into it. And I think, you know, I've been taking notes as we've gone along about how we can improve, improve for the next time, which will be in, in two years by the ordinance. We have to, well, number one, you know, we'll have some terms coming up, but also revisit the list of organizations. So, you know, with that, I wanted to raise the question just publicly. Have us have this discussion. I can, you know, accept what's happened and, you know, I can accept how things are right now and just, you know, thank everyone for their hard work on this.
Okay, Alder Kimball, you're still, oh, okay, you, you still have your hand up. Did you want to continue? Alder Bedar, your, your words, and then Alder Abbas.
Thank you, President Carter. I also, you know, of course, will live by, you know, what the body decides and not the hill that I'm going to die on, on this issue. But I just wanna, I do want to raise that the one appointment that the council makes is the two-year appointment. And so realize we can reappoint, but it'll be a different council. So
Right.
I'm just putting it out there of, is that one appointment that's a full council appointment? Should, should that be a two-year appointment or should that be a four-year appointment? And I realize that then that has a downstream effect of having to change somebody else's, which is another conversation. So my question for President Carter and Vice President Abbas is whether in your process, since you went through the entire rest of the list and kind of like did that thinking about who would get four, three, or two, is there somebody that was on the cusp for you that you felt, hey, that could be a two-year, it could be a three-year, or it could be a four-year? And if that's, you had somebody that was there that you would be, you would think that, okay, let's just not change since we now know that we have a council appointment and who that the person is based on the ranking. So that's, that's all. But again, just putting it out there, but, but not the hill I will die on.
Alder Abbas. I'm sorry, after Alder Abbas, Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you. One of the, as I mentioned, you know, I really appreciate Alder Work Group for working really hard and bringing this up to community as well as leadership to review those application. And we did, as I said, we did our due diligence, we go through all the applications. And we, basis of that knowledge, we made that the CNN about years of experience and also we looked if five members are two years and if they're changing, how we can, how, if they're changing, how much knowledge will be transferred and how this whole process will be worked? So we looked at all of those possibility, Alder Bedar, one thing, and this is something, as a council, we did ranked choice vote. So the two names in front of us, we might don't have consensus fully, fully. I mean, we don't have all 20 votes, one, one name. So if two-year is, for me, I don't think so. There's a huge issue. And that's personal opinion, if it's a two-year term, and if we'll change next council, we'll make the CNN. And, and with that, I, I think so, the way it is, it's, it's fine to me. And I would like to do a motion call for, not motion, there's already motion, I will do call for a vote, if that's the right process.
I believe then what happens is we point out if anyone is in the queue.
Oh, I'm sorry. Barbara, Alder McKinney was in the queue, I'm sorry.
I'm going to lower my hand because Vice President called for the vote and there was a discussion. And this is an example, I, first of all, I, I absolutely know that this was a very tedious process that, number one, getting to the, the listing of the, the names and then going through the ranking. And when you say the word process, this is absolutely an example of when the process does not turn out the way we think it should be, we move the bar. I think it is unfair to go back through the list and see if there is a name that, you know, possibly is just on the cusp that we can change, that is out of integrity. And so since there was a process, whether it was thorough, I mean, I'm not gonna question thorough, whether it's going to be tweaked later on, that's fine. But what is before us is the work of the leadership body, and they went through a very detailed process to get to the recommendations that they have in terms of the year, the the year assessment, and I think we should stand with that. And so I call for the question so that we can move forward.
And that has already been called Alder McKinney by Vice President Alder Abbas. So, and I do, I just wanted to say I do understand the situation with the council represent, the, the council appointment. And I think that one of the things that maybe I missed, and I'm just, we'll be voting in two seconds, just give me a minute. One thing I missed was that this, the two-year would be the ones that's left. I thought we would be voting on the year for the council appointment. So I just want to throw that out there. If, is anyone object to me recording a unanimous vote? There are no objections and I call a unanimous vote for the civilian oversight board nominees. Are there any other items that we need to be discussing? I lost my agenda. Okay, then I will ask for
Alder Bedar.
Yes, Alder Bedar. You're, you're muted. I'm glad someone else talks while they're muted because it felt like I was the only one consistently.
Talking while muted anyways in life, but I was just waiting for you to ask for a motion for adjournment, and I was gonna move adjournment.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys.